Great, thank you. So, once again, we are recording. We're back in special session. We are broadcasting live. The next item on the agreement is collective bargaining agreement would entertain a motion to ratify collectively bargaining contract between WRSD and the SCIU Local 888 ABA Program Assistance as Written.
So.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Randy, can you call the roll?
I can. Not everybody is back, but I'll go with, I'll start from the beginning. Member Aila? Member Bennett? Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Imber is not here. Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Member Pantos?
Pantos, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Sullivan?
Sullivan, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
Chair Dennis?
Excuse me, Dennis, yes?
That's it?
Thank you. Next item, I entertain a motion to ratify the COVID-19 memorandum of agreement between WRSD and Team Strangian Local 170 paraprofessionals as written.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Randy, can you call the roll?
Member Aila?
Aila, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Member Pantos?
Pantos, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Sullivan?
Sullivan, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
Chair Dennis?
Dennis, yes. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is MCAS testing. I've entertained a motion, I'm going to read this into the record. I'd entertain a motion to support the resolution regarding MCAS testing. The Waukesha Regional School District Committee takes the position that for the 2020-21 school year, there should be a moratorium on MCAS testing. Our rationale for this position is as follows. Whereas this is an atypical year with unprecedented stress and demands on students, and MCAS testing at this time would add to the stress while providing little benefit to summer remediation and next year's placement planning. Whereas scheduling and administering MCAS testing at this time would be an undue burden on the schools, given the condensed timeframe. Whereas the focus of education for the remainder of the year should be on students' continued learning and remediation, not testing. Whereas local and common assessments, which are better measures than MCAS for our students' learning, ought to be utilized to measure and address their learning loss and target areas for growth in a timely manner. We urge the legislature to enact the moratorium on high-stakes testing.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Christina, would you care to speak to the motion? I'm not sure if you're the maker of the motion, but I know it came out of Ed's Subcommittee.
Sure, it was a collective effort by the Subcommittee. So the Subcommittee met last week, and this was after some discussion about pros and cons, or benefits and drawbacks of MCAS testing for this year. This was the motion that the Subcommittee put together, and we just wanted to bring it to all of you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Got Mike Pantos?
Did I read correctly that this is stalling MCAS testing for three years, and if so, why three years?
Do you want me to respond, or Mike, or do you want to respond?
So I'll respond. I didn't read that, but Christina, go right ahead and respond.
Yes, just for one year, and that is in conjunction with what the Legislature also has in a House, a bill that was just for this one year.
Okay, thank you.
Linda Woodland?
I was just wondering where this resolution will be directed to. Will it be sent to our federal delegation just within the state? Would it be sent to the Department of Education for the United States? Or, because it seems like there's a lot of levels that need to address this before there would be movement. Could we add our committee voice if passed to that pile going into DC?
So Linda, are you, there's two questions there. I think your first question is who is this going to, and your second question is could this go to our delegation, our federal delegation in addition to state delegation? So let's take the second question. Darrell's, is any issue with us? I assume that's the target audience here?
No, no issue at all.
Thank you. Matt?
It was related to Linda's question, and I appreciate her asking that. My question is, this is a resolution that is being proposed to the school committee. What impact does that have from policy or action that we take as a school district?
So if I understand your question, Matt, I guess again, the first part here is, is there a practical impact to Waukesha? I believe the answer is no. I think we're basically simply conveying our position on the matter. I don't know, Darrell, if you have anything?
You're right, Mike. There's no impact right now, Matt.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Yes, anybody else have a hand?
Yeah, Eric has his hand, and then I'll get to you after that asthma.
Sure.
Hi, thanks. Just clarifying questions. When we refer to condensed timeframe, can you just explain that a little bit more?
Would you like me to answer, Mike, or would you?
No, why don't you go ahead, Christina?
Okay. Just that in this, the proposed testing time, for example, usually the test would be given in March, over March and into May into June. And this year, the proposed timeline right now shows our sophomores and juniors will be taking the test at the high school, for example, in a two-week time period. We also have our, then we have testing in June. It's just a lot of testing that will be going on as we are bringing our students back for, the students that will be returning for full in-person learning. And there's just not a lot of time left in the school year for the standardized testing. That was the position of the committee.
Okay, thanks. One other clarifying question around the local and common assessments. What are those, and do we have information that's come out of those so far this year?
Mike, I think that Bob Burlow could answer that. Deputy Superintendent Burlow, would that be okay?
I'm with that.
Okay.
We've, in the high school, for instance, we've had common assessments in place for multiple years, and those are used to generate grades, to make sure that students have reached grade level proficiencies. In the middle grades, the last two and a half years, we've worked to align curriculum, to develop power standards, and to create common assessments, and the first iterations of those have been put into play prior to COVID, and then we hit COVID. So at least in the high school, they've been in place for multiple years. In the middle grades, it's something relatively new, but we also have star assessments available for K through eight for reading, ELA basically, and math. So that could take the place of the common assessments.
Okay, so just generally speaking, we feel like we have a good sense of how to measure any setbacks or losses or anything based on what we have in place without the MCAS.
Yeah, Eric, I think the good thing about the high school is having had those common assessments in place, and they've been modified and adjusted. That's a pretty strong tool now, and they've had that trend over time, so they could go back and look at that. It isn't something where they just put in place and didn't have a baseline established. They've had those in years, in place for multiple years. So that's a strength of the high school, actually.
May I also add something for Eric's question? Is that okay?
Go right ahead.
One of the things the Subcommittee also talked about, in addition to what Deputy Superintendent spoke about, is the part of the resolution talks about a timely fashion. We don't, we would get the results back from the assessments that teachers can give right away, or in a closer fashion, timely fashion, because they'll be able to go through the data quicker than we would get it from the state. The Deputy Superintendent also talked to us in our education Subcommittee meeting about summer programs and remediation programs, and we'd want that data that we can get from teachers who are in our district so that we could put kids in programs, regardless of whether or not MCAS goes on or not. That will be something that the district is looking to address learning loss.
Yeah, thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
Okay, I have Asma next.
Just a quick question, wondering what the other districts are doing, doing something similar, and are we like working with them to kind of, like we said, put this towards the legislators?
Darrell, do you know if there are other districts with parallel efforts?
Yeah, so yes, other districts are doing something similar to this asthma. In fact, there's kind of a boilerplate letter that has been put together. Superintendents have had that, and they've also been pushing this with, I can tell you, the superintendent's group that I meet with, and the executive group of superintendents meet with the commissioner once a month, and in the last meeting that they had last week, this topic was broached, and there was a lot of pushback on our part about, you know, having him actually pull back on MCAS. So we're hoping something happens.
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're not doing this in a bubble. Thank you.
May I also add to that, Mike?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. So this idea for the resolution actually came at a management Subcommittee meeting from Member Mills, who shared with us that our organization MASC was also pushing to not have to have a moratorium on MCAS for this year as well.
Thank you. I got Malia.
Sorry. I just had a logistical question again to inform, I guess, the situation that is going on if MCAS does happen. Have they indicated a plan for those students that are continuing to learn remotely, and how they will, will they have to come into the buildings? Will they be able to opt out? I'm just curious.
Yeah, Mike, if you don't mind, I'll try to answer that. So there's no opt-out for MCAS, never has been. I doubt there will be ever, and the explanation from DESI around what to do with remote students is the expectation is they will come in and test during that time.
Thank you.
Ken?
Two quick things. One to follow up on, Malia, we've talked about this in the past, and we've encouraged as a committee, the Superintendent and District Administration to provide no sanction for students who put their heads down and don't take the test, so we can't formally opt out, but I know we've taken that position as a committee in the past. Also, I appreciate the Education Subcommittee, since Christina mentioned that I had mentioned this. I appreciate their attention to the detail of this of not overreaching and talking about MCAS in general and the value of standardized testing. I know some of that language is in there, and I appreciate the narrow focus that the resolution has.
Thank you. I got Mike Pantos again.
I'd like to voice to the committee my support for this motion, and I encourage others to support it. As someone who took MCAS not that many years ago, I can say that logistically and as far as the timeframe goes, this would, MCAS would use up a lot of valuable time when we have our kids back in school, where we could be learning, and I don't think that's a good use of our time during the remainder of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions on the topic? Seeing none, Randy, can you call the roll?
Yes. Member Aila?
Aila, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Member Pantos?
Pantos, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Sullivan?
Sullivan abstained.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
Chair Dennis?
Dennis, yes. Motion passes, and thank you again on the Education Subcommittee for taking that up. Next item is an update on reopening of schools. I'll turn it to Darrell.
Thank you, Mike. I'll just present my screen. So this is just a quick update on the kindergarten through grade eight in-person learning process that we've been going through and where we're currently at. So just to recap, DESI has increased in-person learning this school year for all K-5 students, and they're looking to do that by April 5th. As I told you before, Commissioner Riley had been granted authority by the Board of Education to force schools to reopen. No longer count hybrid and remote models as structured learning time, and then require 25 hours of in-person learning a week. So DESI guidance also relaxed ridership restrictions around transportation, so we have more students that are able to ride the bus and the vans. DESI and now CDC support a minimum of three feet of social distancing between students and schools. So this, again, applies to all spaces within a school where a mask is worn. Cafeterias must have a minimum of six feet of distancing, since students must remove their masks to eat. And planning steps to increase in-person learning. So since we brought students back for hybrid learning, we've been maintaining three to six feet of distance in all learning environments, require masks to be worn by all students, follow all the hand hygiene protocols. We've put up spatial barriers in many areas throughout our schools, including our restrooms. We follow detailed cleaning protocols, and we've ensured that ventilation systems in all of our schools are providing four or more air exchanges per hour, and we also are monitoring our CO2 levels. So our planning steps to increase in-person learning, so some of the prep that has gone on, we've shifted from six feet of distance between most desks to between three feet and six feet of distance. So all school learning spaces have been assessed for proper spacing. We've toured all the buildings. So this includes cafeterias where distancing must remain at six feet when students aren't wearing a mask. At this point right now, 90% of K-8 students are planning to return, while 10% will be remaining remotely, and transportation companies right now, they're finalizing bus routes this week, and they will be ready to roll probably within the next couple of days. So the in-person learning model, the way it's going to get broken down, a typical K-8 daily schedule for in-person learning will have a full day on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, with Wednesday being a half-day. Schools revert back to the same start and end times as in a normal school year for the four full days, and Wednesdays will follow a half-day schedule. All of those schedules have been updated and shared with families via the building principals. The maintaining of a half-day on a Wednesday is really in order to provide teachers with time to adequately plan for working synchronously with remote students and in-person students. As, you know, again, I think President of the WRSA, when she spoke to this a little earlier, she just mentioned the fact that this is something that they're doing that's much more challenging than what a typical school year would look like, and that time is just crucial for us to provide their time for the remote students and the in-person students in terms of the planning. And then each school's already shared specific start and end times with families for planning purposes. The remote model will continue to be remote, will have remote programming for all cohort C students for the remainder of the school year. They will remain in their current classes. About 10%, as I said earlier, of those students are going to remain remote, out of all of our students, and DESI has stated that full remote options for next school year, '21 and '22, will not be made available. You know, one thing that I did want to bring up is our high school full-in-person plan. What we're attempting to do is bring our 9 through 12 students back to full-in-person instruction on April 26th. More information is going to go out to families and staff as we develop our plan for full-in-person learnings for the high school. Right now, we did send a survey out to families about this, and about 75% of students are planning to return to school full-time. So we have assessed the learning spaces and locations where masks will be removed for eating, and right now, we're focusing on examining lunch schedules. Deputy Burlow and I had the opportunity to tour the building with Principal Bendo last Wednesday afternoon, just looking at various learning spaces in and around the cafeteria and classrooms and so forth, just to ensure that we have the proper spacing in order to do what we need to do to get the kids back in. The ByNext Now testing, this is an important part of what we're doing. So again, we talked about the ByNext Now testing. The school nurses have now been trained to administer the tests. All the tests are in the buildings. The tests are voluntary, and they're recommended at the discretion of the school nurse, building principals. Many of them have already shared signup information with families, and that should all be back to schools this week. So ByNext testing is the first step prior to pool testing, and what's really great is that just announced today through the governor, pool testing costs are going to be covered for the remainder of this school year by the state. Again, we had talked with another school district in the area, regional school district, that is paying $15 a test for their students. So it's, it would be cost prohibitive for us if this wasn't something that was being covered by the state. So right now, our next step is to organize a process. We're going to work with DESI on the implementation. DESI will be releasing a survey for interested districts, and what they're going to do is match us to a provider. So that's our next step, and we'll be working on that very soon. So right now, we will, I think I'll stop right there, and we can go back to everyone else.
Thank you, Darrell. So there's a motion on the agenda that's been made by a member, or that's been added at the request of a member. So it would entertain a motion for all WRSD schools to return to school full-time in-person education for grades K through eight. For any student who has elected full-time in-person education, to return to full-time in-person education will begin later than April 5th, 2021, and will include full days on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
So we'll open up for discussion. Matt, you are the maker of the motion.
All right. Thank you, Chair Dennis, for providing me with the opportunity to speak on behalf of this motion. Fellow members of the WRSD School Committee, I ask for your support of this motion. I want to share with you the reasoning behind this motion. Simply stated, this motion speaks to the education of our students. This motion speaks to WRSDA providing an education model that can be viewed as the best possible educational experience for the WRSD community. This motion specifically calls for return to full days in-person, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, for students in grades K through eight who elect to do so. In looking at the cost and benefits of this motion, let's first take a look at a few benefits. First and foremost, WRSD will establish full-school weeks and full-school days, where data has shown this community, it's shown this administration and this committee, that this past year has had a substantial impact on the education of our students, to the point that the Superintendent is presenting remediation models. Another benefit of this motion, it will provide members of the WRSD community an educational experience expected when a school budget is tasked and deliberated. The community expects five days per week, not four and a half. What is the cost of not supporting this motion? A half-day may not seem like a lot. Administration has certainly made it seem like it doesn't have a big impact, but half-days add up. There are at least 10 Wednesdays left in the school year. With half-days times 10 Wednesdays, that equals five full days. That equals one week of in-person education. Another cost is precedent setting. We have a precedent for full in-person education. That precedent is five full days of in-person per week. As we've seen and heard from administration, the rationale for half-days on Wednesday is to provide additional prep time. I'd like to remind the members of this committee that WRSD has a model for prep time. That's built into the schedule of the day. That's why we have such items as specials, lunch, and free periods. We've also seen and heard from administration at our last meeting that half-days would still allow WSD to meet, and I will quote-unquote, "the minimum requirements of DESI." Fellow members of the school committee, I ask for your support on this motion and wrap up with the following questions for this body. During a time we are bringing students back to full-time in-person education model, a time where students have suffered enough, is meeting the minimum DESI guidelines as reinterpreted by our administration enough for this committee, or do we as a school committee expect more than the bare minimum?
Thank you. I have Mike Pantos, and then Linda Woodland.
I believe there were two members before me that wanted to speak in the chat.
Um, all right, so maybe I got these a little mixed up here. So I'm going to go with, well, I'm going to go with Linda, and then I'm going to go with Eric. Linda Woodland.
I'm sorry, I thought. Yeah, I thought.
Yeah, I think you have Laura, then Carl, then Mike, then Linda, Melissa.
So the order that I had was, I thought I saw Mike and Linda. I had Eric, Malia, Ken, Laura, Carl. So, you know.
Laura and Carl are on the current topic.
All right.
Starting at 8:38 PM.
8:38, all right. So I'll pick up there. So Laura?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for your advocacy on that. I have a question about the reopening plan as it pertains to the Wednesdays, so it does relate to the, to the motion that's on the floor. Can you please provide the number of teachers who will be still impacted by the 10% of students who are elected remote after the 5th?
So Mike, if you don't mind, Laura, I don't have an exact number, but it's probably in the 90 to 95% range, primarily because we have kids pretty much in every single grade or every single class. There are some teachers that don't have kids who are remote, but it's 90 to 95%.
So they'll have, 90 to 95% of the teachers will have at least one student that is remote come April 5th?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carl?
Yeah, same. Thank you. So I certainly appreciate Member Lavoy advocating for kind of improvements and doing things better with our model for, once we have, once we go back fully in-person as well. However, I would, my concern is really more in regards to ensuring that we have equitable support and instruction for our 10% who are remaining home. And so I would like to make a motion to amend. However, I know that sidetracks debate, and so Chair Dennis, if you would like to have me hold off my amendment so that other people can get their discussions out, you can move me until the end.
I'm guessing that people will probably be appreciative of that.
Okay.
Mike Pantos?
Thank you. This was a pleasant surprise to see on the agenda, at least I can say for myself. I do believe that we need this motion. I do believe that we need this motion. I don't see any good excuse as to why we can't just have a normal full week. I know that the administration and the teachers have made their voice heard, and I respect that. Not passing this would set a precedent in my eyes for the fall return to normal and making exceptions to having a normal full-week schedule. There are huge benefits to having a full week of school. If you add up half-days, it adds up to full days, and we need as much time in in-person learning for those that have picked it as possible. Thank you.
Linda Woodland?
Um, so I think that we have an interesting discussion ahead of, in this. I think that when, there are a couple of key factors that might be getting overlooked, however. One is that there will not be a remote option in the fall, so I don't see why there would be any request for a half-day Wednesday or a half-day at all for the fall going forward. So I don't think we need to worry about that, so we can kind of check that off. I think another aspect is that we've kind of danced around the cost-benefit issue, but we haven't talked about the costs to the remote students. And our remote students have every right to an education, as well as the 90% who chose to go in-person. And I'd like to add that this, the remote-only students going forward, you know, a lot of them, I kind of think of it as remote by choice and remote by necessity. And so the, these students are still going to be carrying on the burden of the pandemic education, and they won't have a chance to go in-person like their peers. And it's going to be a hard toll on them. I've also seen, while my children have been remote only for the time being, but that will be changing, I have seen the very good resources, slide decks, integration of remote into the classroom. When there's only going to be one or two, it's going to take a lot more to create that integration so that every student is seen, every student is heard, and every student can participate equally with their peers. So I don't see how that level of preparation can be achieved during the normal years type of prep periods. And so I think that for the last 10 weeks of the year, having this extra preparation time would make sure that we don't leave our remote-only students in the dust. You know, I know that looking ahead on the 5th, we are going to have a lot of really happy families and students, and then we're going to have 10% who are, are not, it's not that they're just missing out, but they're going to be further removed, and it's going to take quite an emotional toll. I think that's fair to expect. So I would encourage the committee to just let stay the course, finish out this unusual year with the unusual schedule, and let it, don't fear that this is setting a precedent because we're going to have different circumstances in the fall. Thank you.
Melissa?
Linda Woodland said it perfectly. She nailed it right on the head there. But I do worry about the cleaning time. I think that was one of the issues. Is that still one of the issues, is having time to clean the buildings in the afternoon? And if that's the case, I do want to point out, there's still a pandemic. Kids are not being vaccinated, so that's a huge ordeal there, and I fully support the half-day Wednesday still, so they can clean the buildings. Definitely think it's a safety thing right there. And like Linda Woodland said, the prep time for the, for the remote students is totally valuable in my eyes for the half-day, too.
There was a question about cleaning. I don't know, Darrell, if you want to speak to that?
Sure, sure, Mike. Yeah, Melissa, so again, one of the things that we'll continue to do, our cleaning on those Wednesday afternoons, it doesn't have to be quite the same, because we're not talking about cohorts, you know, switching cohorts anymore, so all the kids are in all at one time. So we'll continue to do, like, you know, our heavy cleaning on a regular basis.
I got Scott next.
I believe, listening to the teachers for the past few months, they really do need the time for the remote students going forward, because again, this is not their normal job function. And so I would like to see it going forward as is, as administration has planned. And if a month or two into it, we find that, you know, they don't need that time, then we can take this up. But I do believe the teachers do need the time for prep.
Okay, Kelly?
Hi, I just want to share my perspective, you know, as someone who watches teachers do this day in and day out, and the amount of time that it takes to plan for this, to do it right. You know, I would venture to say it's twice the work. If you have even just one student who is remote and children in front of you, it is twice the work if you're going to provide the kind of engaging experience for that child that's at home. It takes that much time. I see it. And I think if, if we were to do this, I think we would be sacrificing quality for quantity, and I just, I would hate to see us do that. Thank you.
Linda Long-Balil?
So in my correct in understanding that the, on Wednesday, the school day would end at the time it ends now, is that correct?
Darrell?
Yeah, so Linda, all of the building principals sent out the specific start times and end times for those Wednesdays.
Are they the same as they are now?
Some might be off by five or 10 minutes. They're not all exactly the same.
I see, I see. Okay. Because one thing I was wondering was there, if there could be a compromise, and perhaps this is where Mr. Uppar was going with his motion, of having a little more class time, but also having a meaningful amount of, you know, prep time as well. Some, somewhere in the middle was what I was considering.
So if I can jump in on that, Linda, you know, one of the main reasons why, you know, we were looking at this model is because this gives us clean time for the teachers in the afternoon. I can tell you, all 13 building principals are 100% in support of this. We've had many discussions in this particular topic. You know, in fact, I've had, you know, principals write to me just basically saying, what the teachers are doing now, as Member Williamson said, is really twice as much work as they would typically have. And, you know, they are, you know, they moved from turn-and-talk, group-work, project-based learning, collaborative learning, to, you know, developing brand-new instructional practices that they've never had to do before. So, you know, for us to ask them to do this, you know, on top of, you know, a full-time or full-day timeframe on a Wednesday is, I think, a challenge, to say the least.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, the, the start and end times are aligned with what they are pre-pandemic? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, for the four, for, I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, yes, the start time for Wednesday is still the same, but the end times might be offered in a couple of the schools by five to 10 minutes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Malia?
Okay, my computer's slow, sorry. A couple of points I was going to say have already been made. I will echo the sentiment that we also have a duty to educate those 10% of students. I also will point out that although we hope this won't happen, there is a high probability, and the data everywhere supports this, that when you've decreased the distance, as we're about to do, and you throw more students into this mix, you have more people quarantining for close contacts than we do now. It's happened all across the state, even this week. So I, I think that's a reality we can't ignore. I'm not actually quite sure how we're going to deal with that in terms of substitutes in teaching, but I suspect that will also require additional planning that we haven't had to deal with in the past. So that is in the back of my head. I have a question for, for the administration through the chair, in terms of how will this time be handled with teachers? We know they need the extra time. Will they be in the buildings working like they are during regular half-days? Will they be going home and really having time that's not really being accounted for? I'm not suggesting that's the case. I'm just asking the question about how this time will actually be handled. Will they be getting professional development? Will it be work time in the buildings where they have access to one another, to the tech specialists, and, and their time is accounted for? I mean, I hate to say it that way, but that's a question that's been posed to me. Again, I, I don't really think, I think they will be working and using this time wisely, but how will it be? Do we have any guidelines around that, or, you know, where they will be spending their time? How that, what that will look like, I guess?
So I did meet with the teachers last week, Malia, and spoke with them about this particular topic, and I did say the expectation is they'll be in the buildings on Wednesday afternoons.
Okay, that is helpful. So I appreciate that. I had one more. I have to read my own writing, I'm sorry. Oh no, it was about quarantining. So I guess the other thing that I will say is that we've often said during this process that the, the perfect shouldn't be the enemy of the good. Ideally, I think it would be great to have students in the buildings all day, every day. But if DESI has agreed, and I just saw your email, that they, they did agree that this meets their goals, I mean, I, I can see both sides of this, and I have heard from families on both sides of this. I have heard from some who say we need to be in school every day, and I've heard from some who say, please don't do this to us a week before we start. We're planning around Wednesday half-days, and that's what our schedule's built around, and, and we need that. So if, I guess it comes down to me, there are pros and cons on both sides, and I certainly would rather have all the students in the buildings all the time, but I also understand the situation that we are in, and that it's, it's unique. It's different. The planning periods that are in the day usually are still there, but they have a different situation now. And we heard that they would like to use this time. And if DESI is agreeing that this model meets their needs, I mean, I guess I would be more in favor of allowing it to start this way and start slowly and see where it goes. If we start hearing from parents saying, you know, my kid's teacher is not using that time, and my remote kid's not getting any extra attention, and my, or, or extra work, and there's problems that we hear about, then we can bring back to the committee and discuss that and where to go from there, as we've done every other time in this. And I, I'm, I understand the rationale for the motion, and I am conflicted between the two sides, but I go back to, in this case, the perfect not being the enemy of the good. Like, we are jumping into a whole new model, and, and I, I think we owe it to those currently 10% remote students. I, you know, I don't know if that will stay at 10%. I've heard from some families who said, well, I picked that so we have a spot, but I'm not really sure yet. And so I don't think we really know what's going to happen when they're all in buildings. So I guess that's my, those are my questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So we got Sherri next.
I came into this not really knowing how I wanted to vote on this. I, when we first heard we were going full, fullback, I thought for sure it was going to be five full days, and that's what I wanted for my own kids. I do understand that teachers need prep time. I do understand that it's a different model. I want to make sure that there, that's accounted for, for them. A little part of me wants to know, how much prep time do they get in a regular day, assuming we don't have this extra period? I think that's a question that a lot of people have asked. I'm happy to hear that they will be in school on that Wednesday afternoon if it happens. I hate that this is a week before again, and we're looking to make a change. So many people have already made arrangements. I mean, we've had this information for what, almost a month now, that, you know, this is what's happening, and, and this is when it's happening, and, and people made plans and scheduled changes in transportation and everything else. So I have a difficult time with making a change for that reason. And I still don't know how I'm voting, but I would like to know about current prep times, please.
Sure, Sherri. So if, the way the contract kind of breaks out, it's basically 470 minutes over 10 days. So it's about a 47-minute prep period a day, if you break it down that way. Lunch does not count as a prep period. You know, it's typically, I think Member Lavoy said it's around related art, so art, music, or PE. Those are typically the, the places where, those are the places where a regular ed teacher, a classroom teacher, has his or her prep time when his or her students go to one of the related arts.
Thank you. I have Jeff next.
So I apologize in advance. I have a few questions to the chair, to the administration. Is this, to your knowledge, is this something that other districts are enacting, or is this, are we in isolation pretty much with the half-day Wednesday model?
No, Jeff, actually, there are the districts that are doing this. Some districts actually were trying to do full days on, you know, so they were trying to do four days and, you know, one day completely remote, and I think those are the schools that tried to do a waiver, and I think for the most part, they were turned down, which is why. I did share an email with all of you this evening from the Associate Commissioner, Rob Curtin, that, you know, said, you know, a five-day a week, as long as kids are in five days a week, we're meeting the 25-hour timeframe, we're good to go.
All right. And just, can I keep following up? Just stop me if I can. But, so for the structured learning, for the structured learning time, does that include specials, teacher lunch, any masked, masked breaks or recess? Or is that the old phrase, time on learning? Is that, is that considered the same as structured learning time?
Yeah, so it gets rolled in. So it's interesting, because Deputy Berlow has actually met with building principals and gone through the schedules over the past, basically, two weeks, looking at each and every one, so that we're making sure that we're meeting those times. So you can't count, you know, that lunchtime, you can't count recess, so we're looking at the block of time when we can count.
So specifically specials, is that considered structured learning time?
Yes.
It is?
Yep.
All right. And then my last sort of comment is, and I, I say this with all due respect, you know, I, I think that a lot of us have children, obviously, and we, we come from a place of maybe our personal feelings, and I understand that. I guess I would just say that, and I know it's, I'm not going to use 90 and 10% as the numbers, even though that's what they are, just consider what is best for the whole. And I do, I do agree those students should not, I mean, I'm not suggesting by any stretch that, that we don't consider those students. I just think that, as the motion states, that it's more time in front of a teacher, whether that be remote or in-person, is, is what's best for all students, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I have Kanichi next.
Yep, so I'm worried that this motion will also be applied to high school come April 26th. Right now, Wednesday is a half-day for both high school and middle school, and that rest, remaining part of the day is like a break from education. Yes, we can do homework, yes, we have asynchronous work, but it's a time to get away from school. It's a time for us to maybe go outside, take a walk, relax, and just get rid of all that stress and anxiety that piles up during normal full days. By changing that Wednesday to a full day, that recovery period is getting removed, and that is an issue, because now you only have Saturday and Sunday, you only have two days which are in a row. Then you have this five-day period where you're just constantly learning, constant homework, late nights, maybe not sleeping. And so I'd like to keep the Wednesdays as half-days if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you. So I, too, have been torn on this topic when I saw it on the agenda. I would love for my, I have twin juniors, and I would love for them to be in school five days a week. They would love to be in school five days a week. But there's also the teacher part of me. I am struggling. I'm a, an overachieving teacher like all of probably the teachers in our district who want to do the best job they can, and I am not doing the model that our Wachusett teachers are doing. I'm currently in a hybrid model where on the remote days, my students are on their own to do asynchronous work, or they watch screencasts that I've made for them. I cannot imagine what it would be like. We do have a few teachers in my school who livestream to students, and my, that's coming to an end for, for all the kinds of work that I have to do to make everything digital right now in this hybrid model is coming to an end for me in a couple of weeks, and I'm celebrating. I cannot wait. I couldn't imagine if I didn't have, I spend so much time on prep. People are asking about teacher prep. There's. There's, there is, it is, I would, I appreciate uh, Member Williamson's comment, but I'd say it's even three times the amount of work that I normally do in a school year, and it's different work. It's not even the fun kind of work we like to do. I, for that reason, I'm, I'm leaning towards the voting, um, not in support of this motion, thinking of our teachers who need that time to just get their materials together for the kids that are still at home. Um, they need to connect with them. They need to maybe reach out to parents. They also need to work on their materials for their kids that are in front of them. Um, this is a different type of year. I don't think we're setting a precedent, as has been mentioned. Um, I'm also concerned, as Member Gustafson brought up, about um, possible quarantining of students. And she mentioned the increase. I'm finding that this, the last two weeks myself, I've been having to communicate more with I don't want to say anymore, but um, that's going to be a burden on teachers if there are six to eight students in their class who are going to be out. That takes time. So I think we need to think about the time our teachers might need to prep for all of their students, whether they're in person with them, quarantining, or in the remote program. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess, uh, I guess I have a a fairly, what I think is a straightforward question. Um, and and that is um, by going through this model, this Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, excuse me, Thursday, Friday, then Wednesday half-day model, are we meeting the Desi requirements um, for a full return in-person learning?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, I have um Mike, uh, Matt, as a point of information, and and Malia, and then I think Carl has a want to, I mean, double back then.
Thank you. Um, so I'd like to remind everyone that we're here for the students. Um, this conversation is going a lot about teachers, which I understand it regards to teachers, but I'd like to just mention students. Once again, thank you, uh, Kanichi for speaking up about students. I can see both sides of this. Uh, definitely can see both sides of this, and I'd ask that if this is not passed tonight, that we can at least maybe because I know this district's notorious for changing schedules, and I'd like to um, not be a part of that. However, if we could possibly look into maybe doing this on our next jump, which would be when uh, high school goes back to full in person, and things will have changed by then, and we can reevaluate. Maybe that's a time at which we can reevaluate such. I'd like to address a few concerns uh, by some other members. Such it, this is not an anti-remote student motion. Um, I'd like to get that out of people's heads. And this is pro-learning for all students. Uh, also, with the whole pandemic, goalposts keep moving. We don't know what's going to happen in the fall. We don't know if something else is going to happen. So let's stop saying, oh, everything else is going to be solved in the fall. We said that last, last spring. Um, just keep that in mind. And also, question for the administration, why Wednesdays and um, yeah, basically, why Wednesdays?
Uh, Wednesdays are a typical half-day um, when we would have half-days uh, anyway, Mike, so that was why.
Oh, so just out of routine, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I got Matt.
All right. I just wanted to share a point of information on the motion, and the reason why it stays full in person is I wanted to adhere to the guidelines from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Desi. And I will read their guideline, which say that full-time in-person education means that all structured learning time hours, on average, five hours per day of structured learning time at the elementary level, and five point five hours per day at the secondary level are required to be delivered in person five days per week. This will generally mean that students are attending full-school day equivalent to the length of their school day pre-pandemic. Any deviation from offering full-time, in-person instruction five days a week to all students requires a waiver. Now, I do appreciate Dr. McCall reaching out during our meeting to get information from the commissioner. I wish they would respond to me when I email at seven o'clock in the night while we're supposed to be meeting and then receiving information during deliberation. But let's keep in mind that those guidelines that I just ran are state law. So an email from a deputy commissioner, previously, Dr. McCall told us that um, the commissioner, Deputy Dan Anderson, would agree to any plan that we voted on earlier in the year. That was false information. The, the, that's these guidelines were, they will agree to any plan as long as we took into account for every student. Lastly, I will bring up, Dr. McCall and myself had a conversation when our students returned to hybrid. At that point, we took students that were in our programs that were full five days a week, and we scaled them back on Wednesday from full days to half-days. At that point, Dr. McCall and I had a conversation that, don't worry, Matt, when we go back to full time, it'll all return to normal. That was the lip service that Dr. McCall gave me in a conversation. Whether or not he remembers that is a different story. So I'll just point out that the conversation that we had in August was, once kids went hybrid, we would increase their time back in school. That never happened. So when we hear, let's talk about it later, it's a mechanism for this administration to kick the can down the road and hope it goes away.
So Chair Dennis, if you don't mind if I respond real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So Matt, the reason why there was a response from the Deputy Commissioner, because you were uh, emailing me three times before this meeting, so that's I actually sent an email to him and I I texted him. Um, and he wrote to me during the meeting, so that's why that came back to you. So what people need to know is, this was something that was concerning me um, in reference to this back, um, gosh, two weeks ago now. So I did reach out to the Commissioner of Education, um, Jeff Riley. He gave me a call. I talked to him for a little while. Uh, he said that Rob Curtin, who's the Associate Commissioner, would give me a call. Rob called me immediately after. We talked through the situation. He said, as long as you have twenty-five hours of in-person learning during the week, you're good to go. He said, if you were um, doing five, you know, even if you did, um, you know, let's just say uh, seven and a half hours for four days, and you didn't have school on that Friday, he said, that wouldn't work. You need to have kids in the building five days a week. That was the, that was the number one uh, issue that he brought forth. And so I did text him um, and asked him to, or I emailed him and text him, asked him to uh, just share something in writing, because I think um, Matt, you did want something in writing, and that's what, you know, I ended up getting back, so.
I would say if you're going to ask somebody during in session that you invite that person to this deliberation, because we as a school committee should be able to ask them specific questions rather than getting the transcript that you purposely asked for. This reminds me when you had a doctor in the meeting, when you had consultants in meetings, when you had Board of Health, I've never heard from or seen again.
So if I can just really respond real quick, Matt, if I had known that you'd wanted the Associate Commissioner of Education to come to the meeting, I would have asked him.
Okay, let's leave that there. Um, I have Malia next.
Um, I will note that I also requested that we get something in writing um, before our meeting started, actually, earlier today, and I know, so I do know that I don't know if I'm the only one, but obviously not. So I do know I requested that well before our meeting, so. Um, and I appreciate getting that in writing. It um, is helpful. So my only question that I wanted to point out is when we're talking about prep time and that our schools have adequate prep time, is it still true that Mountview has less prep time than the rest of the schools? I know we've talked about that in the past. Do they have one period difference? Or they have the same prep time, they just teach more? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, and um, yeah, the other thing was about the requesting and writing, so I appreciate having that um, from the perspective of Desi. So thank you for that.
I have Catherine and Eric, who haven't spoken on the topic yet.
Um, I just have sort of a question um, for administration. So when you decided on the half-days um, and taking out the remote time for um, that was originally audited during the, during the hybrid time where those remote students got time with the teacher, why didn't you include like a half-hour on Wednesdays or an hour on Wednesdays for teachers to individually connect with those remote students if they were going to be happy?
Yeah, ultimately, Catherine is, the main reason is because we wanted to ensure that the teacher was focusing on the student during the regular time. We didn't want that to be something where they would say, okay, you know what, I don't have to worry about it. I'm going to talk to you uh, later on in the day. So uh, that was really the main reason.
Okay, I guess I do appreciate that perspective. Um, I do share the same concerns with Kanichi about time on learning. I spend that entire Wednesday doing homework from the perspective of a student, so um, or in social-emotional learning, I do think that that Wednesday half-day does provide um, a break for students, especially those remote students from the screen, but also those in-person students, especially at the K to eight level. Um, those younger kids shouldn't be on the screen all day. Um, but I I do understand where the other point is coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Uh, yeah, I think this is, this seems like one of those issues where almost everyone's right, which is one of these weird situations where I have no idea what that actually turns out to be. Um, a couple of things, I feel like, um, do, have we completely ruled out the oper, the option for almost what I would just call, for lack of a better term, an online-only sort of a approach? Where we have a group of teachers that focus solely on that for the 10%, so they get that dedicated focus remote? I know, I think other members have mentioned this in prior meetings, and there's some concern about switching teachers. Totally understand that. But there's also the idea that kids could could handle that and potentially the 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 risk, you know, that it is, it out, the benefit outweighs the risk, maybe, where we could really focus on those kids. And then the in-person kids get the full attention from those teachers in the classroom. Have we completely ruled out that model?
Yeah, we have, Eric. Um, yeah, it, it, we discussed this, um, you know, with administration and with teachers uh, in reference to uh, as you said, uh, I think you alluded to it, um, students leaving their uh, classroom, teachers, uh, you know, moving to a new class. Uh, so not only do we, uh, when looking at this, we would have to uproot kids um, from, you know, not only the remote kids, but we'd have to pull teachers who were teaching in person already. And those kids would have to be distributed to other classrooms as well. So it was really such a, it would cause such turmoil on on both ends. We we decided not to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. This is a tough one. I I can see all sides. I think to to Member Pantos's point about revisiting it, um, I think that's, that's a fair, that's a, maybe a fair compromise. I know that parents have planned and 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 changing now is tough. But um, I feel like, you know, I I mean, I can't speak for the students because I haven't talked to them. I have talked to several teachers who are really, you know, burdened with planning, so I completely understand that. It's I just feel like it's, it's somewhere in the middle here, and it's a tough one, I guess. That's it.
All right, um, Carl, am I going back to you?
Yeah, you're the chair. It's your choice, so.
All right, I'm recognizing you.
All right, thank you. So again, so my, as I said earlier, I would like to make an amendment to this motion. It cycles back to, really, it gets at, at least, Member Lavoy's intent of us doing more than what Desi is requiring. So I would like to amend the emotion, amend the motion, so that at, it would say that no later than April fifth, twenty-ten, and and will include full days on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, with Wednesdays being a half-day. And adding that Wednesday afternoon will be dedicated for small group instruction of remote students and planning. So the addition is this aspect of codifying that the remote students will get some interaction with their teachers during that afternoon time. I'm not saying that, like, doesn't specify that it's how much it is, but they will get that.
Carl, can I ask you to um, repeat? So I got, with Wednesdays being a half-
Oh, I posted in the chat what I would have been amended to.
All right, so the amendment that you're making um, or offering is, we'll include full days with Wednesdays being a half-day. Wednesday afternoon will be dedicated for small group instruction of remote students and planning. Is there a second to the amendment?
I second that.
Any discussion on the amendment, and the amendment only? Um, all right, I think I have Malia, then Mike Pantos. We've got a few people here.
My initial, my initial response to the amendment, while I appreciate the intent, is that that is in a totally different way inequitable to those students that are remote learning, because it places a, an extra burden on them. I have no idea how we'd even manage that or justify that. Um, to require them to intend some sort of small group instruction that their peers that happen to be going into the buildings do not have to. Um, even if we could figure that out logistically, I, I mean, if it's optional, maybe there's a way to do that, but I don't see how we can require that and still say we're providing um, the same equitable education to all of them without placing some undue burden on them. And I'm not sure if it would be legal either, actually, but it's beyond me. That's my immediate concern.
Thank you, Mike Pantos.
Um, so I, I appreciate the intent of the amendment. Uh, however, I don't think it does us much good uh, more than the original motion. Uh, I do appreciate Ms. Mangus has spoken on um, having time to do uh, homework, which is not something I had thought of, but I do remember as a student, I would take every little bit of uh, time during the day that I could get to work on homework, and I'd like to make a motion to close debate.
So, right now, we have a motion to amend. You're mo, you're making a motion to close debate on the amendment.
Yes.
The motion to close debate on the amendment has been made. Is there a second to closing debate on the amendment?
Second.
The motion to close debate on the amendment has been made and seconded. We'll go to a roll-call vote. The roll-call vote is to close debate on the discussion of the amendment.
Member Riley? I, yes. Member Bennett?
Bennett, no.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Gustafson?
In deference to the people with their hands raised, no.
Member Haber?
For the same reason, no.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, no.
Member Lavoy?
No.
Member Longlebeal?
Also in deference to the members with their hands up, no.
Member Mills?
Mills, no.
Member Otmar?
Otmar, no.
Member Pantos?
Pantos, yes.
Member Shapiro? Member Shapiro? Member Silva?
Silva, no.
Member Smith?
Smith, no.
Member Sullivan?
Sullivan, no.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, no.
Member Woodland?
If someone with a hand up, I actually vote yes.
Member Young?
Young, no.
And Chair Dennis?
Dennis, no. I wasn't keeping track, but I think I know where it went.
Fourteen, no. And five, yes.
Okay, so we'll resume discussion on the amendment. I had Linda Woodland and then Scott Brown.
Uh, my larger point has has been made that it's, um, I like the idea. I'm, I'm always a fan of realizing that the remote students are actually going through a bit more strife in a lot of ways, the, in their education this year. Um, however, uh, you know, remote students, remote families also have planning that they've worked around with this half, half-day schedule. Um, and I, I think that we are one, one week away and making such drastic changes like this, whether just for remote, which I think is problematic, uh, or for all of our students, I think, one week away from changing um, of requiring people to change their schedules so, so much, um, I think is, is a problem. I think is, is a problem when you're asking people to go into buildings. So, um, I, I like the intent. Um, I like that it preserves the half day of what has been, um, communicated out extremely consistently across the district. But for this purpose, I, I don't think it's, um, a move I would support.
Thank you, Scott.
I was going to call the motion, but it was already called. But, um, I do believe, uh, we need to give the teachers, uh, the flexibility for that half-day Wednesday. And so this is very similar to what the administration has put forward, excepting, except on the half-day Wednesday, um, defining what the teachers are going to do in the afternoon.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Again, the amendment is to change Wednesdays from full to Wednesdays being a half day. Wednesday afternoon will be dedicated for small group instruction of remote students and planning. Any other discussion? Mike Pantos, again.
I'd just like to state that it's 21, 30 hours and that's why I made the motion to call it.
Okay. Um, seeing no other questions or, um, comments, we'll call a roll on the amendment. So this is a question to change the motion to the amended motion.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, no.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, no.
Member Brown?
Brown, no.
Member Gustafson?
No.
Member Haber?
Haber, no.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, Kirshenbaum, no.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, no.
Member Lavoy?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
No. Member Longlebeal?
Member Longlebeal, I appreciate the intent, but no.
Member Mills?
Mills, no.
Member Atmar?
Well, I'm not going to get shut out. Atmar, yes.
Member Pantos?
Pantos, no.
Member Shapiro? Member Silva?
I'm on the fence, but I'm going to vote no.
Member Smith?
Smith, no.
Member Sullivan?
Sullivan, no.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, no.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, no.
Member Young?
Young, no.
And Chair Dennis?
Dennis, no. So we return to discussion on the original motion. Are there any other comments or questions on the original motion? Any new information or questions that someone would wish to add? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote, um, for the original motion that's on the table. I'd ask, is, uh, your call upon to vote if you could just give in the affirmative or negative or abstain.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, no.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, no.
Member Brown?
Brown, no.
Member Gustafson?
No.
Member Haber?
Haber, no.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Lavoy?
No.
Member Longlebeal?
Longlebeal, no.
Member Mills?
Mills, no.
Member Atmar?
Atmar, no.
Member Pantos?
Pantos, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, no.
Member Smith?
Smith, no.
Member Sullivan?
Sullivan, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, no.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, no.
Member Young?
Young, no.
And Chair Dennis?
Dennis, no.
Six, yes? 14, no.
It's the motion to fail. There's no other comments or questions on reopening of schools. We'll move to the next item on the agenda. We have Ken and Han and Carl before we move on.
Just briefly, it wasn't about the motion, so I didn't ask it before. Uh, the, the superintendent mentions in there that remote will not be allowed next year. There's actually a conference call on Monday with regards to districts that want to do remote academies. I still see 500 of our high school students, um, that are choosing to be remote. I just encourage the superintendent to go and bring information back to the committee about this. Just, I don't want our kids going to TECA or something and losing them all out of district if there is an option to create some environment to keep them in the district. So I'm not saying we should do it or not, just bring us information back, um, from that, that webinar would be appreciated.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, Ken.
All right, Carl?
Yeah, just a quick question from the, uh, presentation. Um, in regards to pool testing, what is administration's thoughts on requiring students to participate? I know that there's been discussion across the state. Some districts have made participation in pool testing mandatory. Watertown's one that comes to mind. I think there have been some others. It seems like it at least passes legal snuff. Uh, but I don't know if, what's administration's take on making participation mandatory?
Uh, you know, it's interesting, Carl. I, I'd not heard of any districts making it mandatory. I, I didn't think that would be legal, um, where you're forcing someone to have to take that, take the test. I have seen, um, because I've participated in a couple of webinars, uh, there are districts who have put this out there and they have, you know, 40%, 50%, 60% participation rates uh, for students, uh, but, um, I would, I wouldn't force people to do it, staff or students.
Linda?
Um, from your presentation, I'm just curious for, for high school, uh, I wanted to be sure. Are you intending to have, uh, students go back full, full days? Or, um, would it be like now the mornings and then it, like in case the cafeteria um, overflows and lunch periods lasting all day long? Don't get convinced. Thank you.
Yes, right. So right now the goal is to bring them back full days. Uh, and so, you know, again, that's one of the reasons why we had that, that last line talking about the cafeteria. So we are looking specifically at how we can get the, the kids through, uh, the, the lunch uh, in an adequate timeframe without adding, because right now there are four lunches at the high school. Um, what we don't want to have to do is go to six because then all, you know, all of the schedules um, really get moved around quite a bit. And I think Catherine and Kneecy wouldn't be very happy with me. So, uh, we're doing everything in our power to keep it a four.
Matt?
My concern is, um, when will we have that planned off to a call? We had all just deliberated something and we were talking about short notice. And high schools, April 26th, today's March 29th. It would be great to have those types of discussions tonight, though it's not short notice. I asked this in previous meetings, but when will we know as a committee so we can have appropriate discussions of what the education model will look like at the high school?
Sure. So, um, you know, again, we had talked about the education model for the K8 a while ago. I'd just put it out to families several times. But, uh, at the high school right now, uh, the plan is to have them in school, um, for the, the four, four days a week, probably with the same half-day model on a Wednesday. And we're still, uh, discussing that with, um, uh, Principal Bando and looking at how that plays out. But again, just so everyone knows, um, there are still some details that we have to work out in terms of uh, lunch schedules and we're working on that right now. Uh, we'll see how that works out. Um, we're not really, we're not completely sure. Um, that's why that's farther down the road in terms of a, a timeframe. And again, we're, we're, um, we're moving much faster than, than the state is in terms of trying to bring kids back uh, at the high school level. So, um, K5 is, um, you know, set for April 5th, we're doing K8. So, um, I know some districts are doing that as well. Uh, but we're, we're moving a little faster than, um, the state says we have to. We're doing the same thing with, with high school. Right now there's no return date for high school. In fact, I'm not sure whether or not the commissioner is even going to say there's going to be a real return date that he mandates. Uh, and that was from a discussion that we had, uh, last, uh, Wednesday or Thursday, uh, at a webinar. Uh, so I really feel as though what we're doing right now is taking those steps. As soon as we have, um, more definitive information, you know, all of that will go out to everyone.
So, so Daryl, if, um, if, if I can, um, you know, we've been putting out, you've been putting out the target of April 28th for the high school to return, um, since we've been talking about the topic. Our next school committee meeting is on April 12th. Can we look to April 12th as being a time when, um, the details around the return to school for April 28th will be ironed out and, and we can discuss them?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I have, uh, Mike Pantos.
Uh, two things. First of all is, so the proposed date for high school full in person is the 26th or the 28th? On mute.
It's the 26th, Mike.
Would it be possible to have Principal Bando on the meet, available on the meeting on the 12th?
Sure, I could see if you can make it on that day.
I would appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments on the reopening of schools? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, planning for student assessments and remediation. We'll turn it back to Daryl.
Okay, thank you so much. Chair Dennis, I'm just going to share my screen again. Again, um, you know, one of the things we did want to talk about is just our planning for, uh, student assessment and remediation, uh, moving forward. So, uh, again, identifying students in need of additional support. So we, we've been doing this now for, uh, quite some time. So we, we began in the fall to identify students in, in need of additional su- support. We were talking about specifically cohort D. So, uh, those students were brought back for in-person learning and support. Um, and some of those students came back for in-person learning, uh, for four to five days a week, uh, in fact. So since October, principals and staff, uh, have been working in teams to identify, um, you know, students in need of real targeted support. And the main areas we were focusing on, uh, were around attendance, engagement. So whether or not they were actually, um, you know, focusing on what they were trying to do, um, when they were doing it online. Academics, uh, behavior and SEL needs, um, and they were really looked at for each student. And then there were intervention and support plans put in place for those specific students as well. So in terms of assessing student learning, um, I believe, uh, you know, Deputy Berlow already spoke to some of this already. But, uh, again, we've been monitoring student progress, uh, in specific areas. So we, um, use panorama education for our SEL survey. That's our social emotional learning. But we also have a student success portal, uh, which is something that we just brought on board and we're going to be using, uh, in all of our buildings. Um, we also have our, for academic learning, we have star reading and star math assessments. And that covers, as Bob mentioned, K through eight. Then we also have common district developed assessments. And, you know, when we're talking about that, uh, we have quite a few of those at the middle school level, as Bob mentioned. But it's really the high school where we have those, uh, common assessments across the board. So those are going to be used to measure grade level competencies. And those are also going to be used to help us identify students, uh, for, um, either summer programs and/or, uh, any extended day programs we might be looking at for next year. So really the student remediation process, you know, we're in the planning stage right now. So we're really developing our specifics around a summer program. So our goal is to have a program in place, uh, immediately after, uh, the Fourth of July break. Um, you know, one thing that we do know is that I think staff, administration, teachers, kids, um, they're all, they're all pretty tired right now and they all could use a break. Um, so we didn't want to begin this immediately after school was over in June. So we wanted to give them a little time off. It would be about four mornings a week. That's what we're currently looking at. Uh, we'd focus on ELA math and science. And right now we're working with, um, our special ed program. So Christine Smith and I have been talking about her extended year program and, um, this other remedial program that we would have. And looking at building spaces and how that might play out. And, you know, again, we're also looking at, um, transportation options and what those costs might be because that does come into play when we're looking at, uh, this entire process. And again, there's also, uh, the opportunity for an acceleration academy. And this is something that the Commissioner, uh, Desi is putting out there. So what they're going to do is they're looking at sponsoring a program where you would have the opportunity for students to come in for kind of a, a, a week-long intensive um, support program to get kids back into the swing of school prior to school starting. So it would be about four hours, um, of subjects, uh, specific support in ELA, science, math, for a total, um, amount of 20 hours, uh, during a week. Um, everything would be covered by Desi. So it's a kind of an entitlement grant. So if we, it was something that we would be interested in, um, Desi would cover the costs associated with teachers and everything else that goes along with it. There is more information that will be forthcoming, but I did fill out a survey today that said, uh, we would be interested in looking at this, uh, for our students. And that is where we're at right now.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the topic? Linda Woodland?
You're going to be sick of saying my name. I'm sorry. So I have a couple of questions about, um, the remediation plans for the summer. Um, I saw, uh, I was a little surprised to see science, so I was curious if that's for K through 12 or just upper levels or what? And then I also was curious to know if there's any possibility of doing, um, like an SEL-focused kind of remediation. I'm thinking of the kids who normally would have in-person, um, social skills groups or things of that nature that are hard to do, um, i- in person with COVID protocols. Is it, you know, and you see a lot of, for the younger kids, this kind of desire of they need to, they need to heal, they need to connect again in order to learn in the fall. So is there anything about, um, those wavelengths that could be happening? Thank you.
Yeah, definitely, Linda. So, you know, in terms of the science, uh, you know, we're really looking at that being probably middle high. When we're talking about the SEL piece, uh, one of the things that we wanted to attempt to do is bring that into the programming anyway. Um, that would be part of what would be, you know, during the day. Because again, when we're talking about trying to get kids in for four weeks, uh, during the summer, uh, it can't be purely academic the entire time. We want to focus on also having the opportunity for students to, um, work with one another, to talk with one another, to have some, as you said, some SEL pieces, uh, to go along with what, what's going on around, uh, you know, cooperative learning, uh, discussions, as you said, a level of healing, uh, for them and to have some consistency with that during the summer. So, um, it has some, oh, and Chris Smith does have a hand up. I'll let you go, Chris. So that is something, and Chris, if you want to jump in right there, that's fine.
Sure, thanks. Um, I just wanted to mention that we did have, um, psychologists working last summer and we would definitely be looking at that. I know one of our elementary schools is pulling together, um, a pilot program that I'm going to be looking at um, and reviewing to see if we can spread that out over a few more schools. So, um, I'm, we're thinking along the same wavelength, Linda, making sure that our kids are getting what they need during the summer as we boot, sort of reboot them back to school. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. I have, uh, Mike Pantos.
Thank you, Superintendent, for that presentation. I think it's acceleration academy would be a great, uh, option to have available for our students. Um, would that be a remote or in-person option or both?
It would be in-person.
Okay, thank you.
I think I had Laura next.
Thank you. Um, a question, I'm not sure if I saw this detail and maybe overlooked it, um, but I, I'm not sure that I, I caught it anyways. Is there a timeline for when you expect families to know if they've been identified as, uh, children in need of, of these services? Um, and, uh, or, and are these, are some parents able to sign students up who maybe, um, did not get, uh, recommended by teachers or identified through some sort of process?
So we're still looking at the, the timeframe for that, Laura. That's why, that's not specifically in there. In terms of, um, you know, parents that still might want kids to have a little bit extra, um, we are talking about there being some type of enrichment, um, support that we'd be able to provide in some form or fashion. It might not be in-person, it might be, uh, online, but, uh, it's something that we're looking at as well.
Thank you.
Malaya? Malaya?
All right. Um, one of my questions was about the option to self-refer. Um, so I guess that was just addressed to some degree. Um, I wondered about numbers. I know it's very early in this process, but I don't know if you had a target number in mind to say a certain percentage of students or a certain number that you think our spaces could accommodate, um, that you're thinking of as a ballpark. Um, you know, is it like one group, small group of kids, or you know, a percentage per school, or just along those lines?
Yeah, it's, it's probably going to be 10 to 15% um, Malaya, in terms of uh overall numbers. And it might look a little different from um, you know, from one place to the number, in terms of the numbers, because of the way the percentages break down, but that's really what we're trying to look at.
And it would be oh, theoretically open to all students, not just special education students?
Yeah, oh, right. And it, it just, just so people know, again, I'm differentiating this. So we've extended school year for special education that we run automatically and it's part of students' IEPs. This is something that's different. It's uh for, it's support for uh, you know, remedial work for students uh who need support. Uh, and we've been able to, as, as uh, you know, I mentioned earlier in the presentation, you know, kids who, you know, we've identified a lot of these kids already in terms of the support that they need. And um, you know, we'll continue to take a look at them as we progress through the rest of this year. But again, what we want to do is establish some type of, you know, routine for the students during this summer, so they have some continuity. Uh, but we also are giving them a ton, you know, a chance for a break end of June, um, and, you know, beginning of August as well.
Do you, and this may be for Christine Smith, I'm not sure. Do you anticipate extending or expanding the capacity for the ESY programs this summer as well to meet additional needs that may be apparent due to COVID?
Chris?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, our ESY program, as you know, is all driven through the IEP process, so we are responsive to our IEPs. Um, we have not created um an extended number of weeks in the program at this point. We um, but as I said, like last year, we had to extend the staff that we had in just to meet the needs of our kids. So typically, we don't have school psychologists and um, probably as many related service providers or specialized teachers. Um, and so we've had to increase those kind of service providers along with, you know, specialized reading specialists, these kind of things.
I appreciate that. I was just curious, because they have somewhat different needs.
And Malaya, just jump in on that real quick, because this goes along with the, the first question you also asked. Is it, again, one of the things we're, all districts are going to have trouble with this year in terms of um, you know, supporting students during the summer is finding staff. Um, because I do know that um, that's already a conversation that superintendents are having uh around concern not being able to get staff to commit to summer teaching anyway. So I know sometimes, you know, even during a good year, um, oftentimes, Chris has difficulty finding enough staff um to come in and do the teaching that we need. So uh, it's something that we're, we're seriously looking at as well.
As we get closer, I'd be interested in knowing how that's going and kind of those discussions, but that's an advanced topic. Um, on the subject of the accelerated academy-
Oh, but wait, I have a little committee, just so you know, Malaya. I did put it out at CPAC. We have a little um special education ESY um, committee. So if you want to join, I only have two members right now, but feel free.
I did know there was one um in the past, so I appreciate that. Um, so my other question for, I guess for Daryl, is about the accelerated academy. Is that, I know that um at least one of our middle schools in the past has done what they call a brush-up week before school, which sounds maybe not as intensive or targeted, but somewhat similar, where they have math and writing and, and they have um in the morning, you can pick morning or afternoon, and it's largely self-selected, it's not targeted. But is that a similar model um that? Or, I'm just trying to draw a parallel-
Yeah, it's probably similar to that, Malaya. Uh, but, a- and again, it's, it's primarily so that you can get kids, you, you're really brushing up on your skills beforehand, and it's to get kids into the mode of school prior to school starting, because again, if you can get-
It's been very effective. They've, I mean, the kids who have done it, I know, have always had a great, reported a great experience. And I'm biased because we did go to that school. I don't know if other schools have that. Um, and it's done through the PTA, so that's another discussion. But I just didn't know if that was a general model. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. And we'll look forward to getting some more updates as we get closer.
Thank you. I have Linda Long-Bleul.
Yes, um, just very quickly, I think it's really great that you're focusing on these uh summer sessions, and I think we should devote as many resources to them as, as we can within our, within our budget. Um, I'd like to encourage as many students to participate as possible, and I worry a little bit that because there has historically been a stigma associated with summer school um or summer sessions, et cetera. Um, I think it would be helpful to find a, a positive sort of name um uh for the program, uh, to encourage kids to participate, um, just to alleviate that stigma. Um, so if you could, uh, maybe come up some positive-
We'll definitely work on that, Linda. I hear what you're saying.
Thank you. Matt?
I don't know if you answered this, I apologize if it has been answered, but have we communicated to those people that have been identified yet as potential home candidates?
Not yet, Matt.
What is the plan for that communication?
So right now, what we want to do is define the plan first before we put out um, you know, specifics around the plan. So I would probably say sometime um, right before or right after April break.
Have we communicated to students, teachers, or the people that support them to see what can be done in the meantime to help with remediation?
That's what they're doing now. So they're actually working with these kids anyway. So again, you know, what we're looking at is, we might have these kids, some of the kids might, you know, these are the kids that were already the cohort D students uh to begin with, so they're already getting that support. What we're looking to do is provo-, you know, somehow provide that extra support during the summer, um, so that we're able to keep them, keep them going during the summer as well.
I appreciate the different um pieces of the presentation that you put together regarding some could be Desi-funded. Um, have we identified a budget for, for these pilot programs, for the programs? What is the cost going to be to our district to be able to put an effective program in place?
So we're actually doing that right now, Matt. Um, I'll probably be able to come back to you guys. If not the 12th, it'll probably be the meeting after that, where I can talk to you specifically about uh the costs associated with this. You know, I can tell you that one of the things we're looking at is being able to tap into the S R three grant, which is that third grant that's coming through for us from the last round of the stimulus package. And what we should be able to do is utilize that to help, and again, 20% of that grant has to be utilized for remedial work uh in some form or fashion. So we know that that's going to be, that's several hundred thousand dollars.
Have we identified the amount of resources that we're going to need tied to the funding or the budget?
Uh, the specific resources right, right now, that's what we're actually formulating. So we're looking at um costs associated with staffing, busing, materials, uh, everything that goes along with that.
It would be very helpful to be able to see what all those components are from resources schools. Um, I, and I'm speaking because I know that, for instance, the summer recreation program in Rutland has already been offered one of the schools to be able to conduct summer recreation. And I don't want to be putting a cart before a horse if we don't understand, one, who is the potential audience, meaning students? What resources do we need to support that audience? And what is the financial impact? And I heard pieces of each of those, but I don't think that there's been an advance of some of that would look like.
No, you're exactly right. I guess, a- and, and I think you had a question. Were you, were you, when referring to the, like, the summer programs, were you talking about, okay, the, you know, Rutland Rec uses NAQAG, for example? So was it, okay, are you not going to be able to use NAQAG because Rutland Rec is using it?
It's, well, my question is more around that, yes, than it sounds like. Remember, um, Director Smith had mentioned that there might be pilot programs. I'm envisioning that this might extend to different schools that we typically would have summer programs in.
Yep. And, and one of the things we're looking at right now, um, you know, part of our discussions have been how we can consolidate some of our programs so that they're um, located in one space, because the other part of this is, uh, you know, having a nurse available. And uh, that in and of itself can be a challenge to, to actually get nurses during the summer um, who can be there uh and be available for those buildings. So that's one of the reasons why we're looking at larger spaces where we might consolidate um programs.
Thank you. I have Sherry next.
My question is specifically about the high school. I'd like to know where the line is being drawn between remediation and leveling down students for next year. Um, I'm hearing a lot about, you know, the honors kid who always got A's and B's, who, you know, is now getting D's uh, due to whatever factor of remote uh COVID learning. And now for next year, they're being asked to go to CPA-level classes. Uh, of course, I don't want to put them on this path that they were on this upper path, and now they're being brought down where maybe if they had, you know, the summer remediation, they would be able to continue on the path they were on. Um, especially in math programs and such. It just, I don't want to only focus remediation on the kids who are failing. Because there are kids who are suc-, who were over, overachieving, who are certainly underachieving at this point. And I worry uh for them. I guess I'd be curious to know, in the recommendations at the high school for the next year, um, have we seen a drop in levels overall?
Sherry, that's a great question. Um, you, you, you bring up a great point, because again, we're not talk- i- there are students who have, you know, who are at this level and who were on this track, and then um, I think uh, the pandemic kind of threw a wrench into their gears, and uh, it made it very challenging for them to move forward this year. Um, that, one of the challenging parts is um, really defining what those specific skills need to be for that student. And then also the schedule associated with the students moving forward. So I know that that's one of the things, you know, they have to get the scheduling done ASAP. Um, I'll, I'll definitely speak with Bill about that, uh, because I do think that's a really good point that you bring up.
Thank you. So I have a follow-up and a couple of questions, but um, we have a point of order um made by Malaya. Uh, I believe you'd like to make a motion.
I did want to make a motion to extend the meeting till 10:30.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Randy, would you call the roll?
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown? Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, no.
Member Long-Bleul?
Long-Bleul, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, no.
Member Otmar?
Otmar, yes.
Member Pantos?
Pantos, no.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, no.
Member Smith?
Smith, no.
Member Sullivan?
Sullivan, no.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Dennis, yes. What do we got there?
12, yes. And six, seven, no.
Okay. Um, so thank you. I will, um, Linda, you have your hand raised, we'll come to you. I have a couple of quick questions. Um, and one is a follow-up to, I think, what, what Sherry had, had asked. So, and, and Daryl, you had mentioned that, um, you know, the plan hasn't been developed yet. Do you hope to be able to share it on the 12th, if not the 12th, and then the one after that? Um, my, um, I, I, I guess I want to understand, is it the district's plan to assess systematically all students in the district and determine, one, you know, specific students that, that may have um a particular deficit that needs to be addressed? And, and two, whether or not there are systematic themes overall that need to be addressed?
So yes, that's one of the things we're looking at is, um, again, we talked about the assessments that will be um, have been going on and will continue to do, uh, to give us, you know, some, and we'll be able to pull out some common themes, you know, ultimately, in terms of looking at what some of the uh supports might need, what might have to be. I, I think Linda Woodland mentioned earlier, you know, what the SEL supports might look like. So uh, we have those pieces. Um, but specifically, when we're talking about some of the other work that we're looking at, it um, it's really around ELA math, um, and, you know, science for that middle and high.
Thank you. There are studies that are starting to come out. McKinsey has done one that has projected um, reading learning loss um as of June 2021. This is a projection. Um, but six months of reading learning loss overall. Um, so these are studies that are starting to come out. It's, it's obviously a concern. And we, as, as many other uh districts, um, will need to understand what the impact of the past year, year and a half has been, and, and what do we do about that? Um, you know, reading in particular is one that's so foundational um to, to student success in every other area. Um, you know, I use that as, as an example. Um, but it's really important that we understand uh that we have this approach. And, and when these assessments would occur, would they occur before the end of the year, that would they occur at the beginning of next year? Um, I think is an important detail for, for us to understand. Um, finally, um, you know, when we received this update, you mentioned before um, the ESRS grant, you know, there are a few different avenues for potential funding, the ESRS grant being one. Um, there's also funding, you know, from the American Rescue Plan Act, um, that's coming to towns um, that could potentially be used, should the case be made that there's a remediation plan that is needed. Um, so, so there is a potential for an ask there. Um, and then, you know, the third area is, is money that's being administered through Desi. But again, I think that we need to be able to articulate um the program and, and the need. Um, so, you know, this, while, this, this coming together, um, although there's a lot of things that come together this time of year, um, is timely for us to be able to, number one, understand, you know, what, what the situation is, what our plan is to address it, and to look for funding to be able to support it.
Yep, yeah. Thank you, Mike. And I have to say, the, um, you know, the money that the towns are also getting, uh, those are funds that, uh, you know, could be eligible, or we could be eligible for in terms of supporting us, but you know, we do have three areas um, in which we'll be able to tap into in terms of supporting a summer program. And, you know, even a, a program, and Deputy Burlow and I have talked about this, uh, even something that could look like an extended day program moving into next fall and to next school year.
I have Linda Long-Bleul.
Um, very quickly, um, I want to echo the point that Member Haber made about the kids who were uh doing well before the pandemic and then got derailed. And it was partly because of, partly because I had those kids in mind when I made my point about finding a positive name for any summer programs that's not stigmatizing, because those kids will be the least likely to uh use it if uh, um, if the, uh, if it's a very stigmatizing kind of name. So.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on um, on this topic? Seeing none, we'll go into um, next item, superintendent evaluation timeline. Um, I'll look to you, Matt. Do you want to give an update on the evaluation timeline?
Sure. Before I do that, Chair Dennis, if you had an opportunity to connect with Lynn, uh, sufficient for me to address that.
I'm sorry, Matt, your connection is a little jumbled, so I'm not sure I caught.
Can you hear me now?
That sounds a little better.
Um, have you had a chance to connect with MASC?
Yes. So, you know, the question for, for uh everyone else is, um, you know, the intention here is to uh bring in support from MASC on helping to set a baseline uh of understanding for filling out the rubric for the superintendent evaluation. And I did confirm with them that they're able to meet us both at our subcommittee date on April 6th, as well as our next full school committee meeting on April 12th.
All right. So can you hear me now, Mike?
I can.
All right. So I'll, I'll go over the timeline of events. So the next meeting for the, we met as a subcommittee recently, a half week, and a week ago today. And the timeline is on April 7th, the evaluation subcommittee will meet. And we're going to be joined by MASC Representative Blaine Kuchar. And what is going to happen at that meeting is, um, Lynn is going to help us understand the proper ways to, to, to complete the assessment in terms of waiting and, and, and scoring. At that point- waiting and, and, and scoring. At that point, Dr. McCall will, will also be prepared to provide evidence. And, and at our April 12th meeting at the full school committee, Dr. McCall will provide evidence related to its goals. We will also, as a full school committee, have Glenn from the, from M A S C join us to be able to present. People can ask questions, make sure that we're, we're all on the same page. At the conclusion of that April 12th meeting, April 13th will, will have the electronic evaluation tool available for every member of the committee to complete. That will close on April 23rd. So, you know, the hope is that everybody will do it as soon as possible, but as comprehensive as possible. Closure of that evaluation tool will happen on the 23rd. As a subcommittee, the subcommittee will compile the results of the evaluation and will meet on April 27th to review the compilation of that and begin to write up the theme for writing a comprehensive review. Those will be submitted to the chair of the full school committee, Member Dennis, by May, May 1st. By May 4th, the evaluation subcommittee will meet, will review the chair's draft of that, of the comprehensive evaluation. Then for our meeting on May 6th, the comprehensive evaluation will be delivered. It will be deliberated as a full body and we will have the opportunity to vote it into factor two on that day if the committee decides.
Thank you, Matt. So the, the target date for delivering the composite evaluation will either be May 5th or May 6th. It's not on the calendar at this point, but it'll be a special school committee meeting with, with that on the agenda. Any questions on the superintendent evaluation timeline?
Sure.
Malaya, is that, is this?
It is. Yeah, but is, was Linda, Linda, was Linda before me or did she talk already?
No, that was before we, so you're up.
Okay, I only have a quick question. I appreciate having it all laid out so we can all satisfy time in our calendars. My quick question was about the M A S C piece. When they come, when they come to the full committee, are we having like a training or is that a question and answer session? Or is there a formal component where they're going to present similar information to what they're presenting to your subcommittee? Because based on past years, I think that would be helpful. And I just, I didn't know if that was the plan or, you know, or if we should all join your subcommittee meeting to hear more.
No, I, I think the, the, the plan is for, for there to be alignment with the subcommittee meeting and then to deliver that, that training on the 12th. And, you know, I'm sure that there can be an opportunity for questions and answers as well.
I think that's essential. The last training we had from them, we didn't have opportunity to ask questions. And that seems to be kind of a key point to make sure that we all have a similar understanding and can get things clarified. So I just wanted to make sure we had enough time for that. And I appreciate this. As I said, I, I, it, it is a time-consuming process. And those who haven't been through it before will appreciate this when you're done, have the, the time set aside in your calendar. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the topic? Seeing none, I would entertain comment.
Yeah, can I, I just want to address Member Gustafson's concern as well, that if there are pieces that you know you have questions about, we can always open it up to submitting those in advance. So we can craft one in advance of the meeting and that can be part of that presentation or training as well. So happy to, to be the liaison to help communicate that.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
Is there a second?
For the movement seconded, Randy, would you call the roll?
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Member Long-Balil?
Long-Balil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Member Pantos?
Pantos, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Sullivan?
Sullivan, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And Chair Dennis?
Dennis, yes. Our meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.